We'll go ahead and open the current city council meeting for August 7th, 2019. We'll call it 6:35. We've already had a prayer in place, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. Approve of the July 17th, 2019 city council meeting. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks Brett. Okay, we'll go on to C petitions. At the public forum, anyone can speak on items that are not on the agenda. Time limit is three minutes. So we'll go to that at that point. Okay, not seeing anybody who wants to take advantage of the public forum. We'll move on to number two, staff reports. Staff, any staff would like to go up and addresses?
Mayor and council, I just wanted to give a huge shout out to all of you guys. For all of your help in the salmon supper. It was really hot that night and you all worked really hard now to say thank you. That was awesome. And all of us, if any of you volunteers helped, thank you. We that couldn't have been such a success of all the volunteers. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Janine.
Oh Sarah.
Sorry, what was this there?
I don't know which microphone you're using there. I'd also like to thank everybody for coming out and supporting National Night Out. It was a pretty good success. Thanks Janine, she's always willing to help us and make things happen, so I appreciate her help. Just a report from the end of July, early July. We made 100 arrests and included 183 offenses. Issued 161 citations, which include 221 violations. And 300, or 1306 calls for service. Four DUIs, 269 traffic accidents, or traffic stops. Sorry, she's over here typing on the phone. And 35 traffic accidents. So, another busy month. Just a reminder, there's a Christmas egg date, a fundraiser, a cancer fundraiser this Saturday. At the Memorial Park, a run that is hosted by In-N-Out Fitness and in conjunction with the police department. So, it's a fun run, there'll be some games, some food, and so, please come out and support it.
One more time, other chief.
It's this Saturday. The run kicks off at 8:30, which kicks off the event, and then it'll go probably up to...
Do you have a post on that, like your social media page?
We do.
Did you put it on?
Yeah, and we can refresh it too.
Oh, sure.
With some of that, I'm sure.
And the fundraiser is with the In-N-Out Fitness fundraiser?
Yeah, that's what it's called, yeah, exactly. It's a fundraiser that they pick a child or community that's going through cancer treatment, and they raise funds to help that family out. It's a good call.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
Well, Mayor and council, just a couple of quick updates. The sewer line, that 36-inch line is under construction out there by the sewer plant. The water line is the Condi, it's done for the PI projects are done, we're just waiting on the well. They've got the pump designed, so it's in the process of getting built. In fact, it could take a couple of months. You know, it's not on the shelf thing when you're spending $130,000 for a pump and a mower, so. Fit Piper Glass, obviously just across the street, is under construction. The sorbet is going in, the water and sewer have already been replaced and that is about two blocks, so that is moving forward. Kent's Slurry Seal project is getting ready to start in a week or two, on St. Ty Avenue is part of that. So, we've definitely got some quality on. We've been doing interviews, so hopefully we'll have the interview from Kim's replacement and the water operator just the last two days. We've got plenty going on in the city, so.
Thank you. Any other staff would like to address us? If not, we'll move on to council. Councilman Christensen, would you like to address us? Are you still with us?
I am still with you. Sorry, I have to unmute my phone.
Oh.
No, I don't have anything to do. It was good to see the, the town owner, Austin, our salmon festival. That was fun. Enjoyed that. Things could be going a lot better. With the flow and the timing, I appreciate that, the efforts that went into that. Otherwise, I'd be regretted.
What did you want to?
A couple of things that I wanted. I wanted to thank everyone for that salmon supper. How many tickets were sold?
5,000.
5,000? A lot of work for Janine and her group, and we certainly appreciate. And it went so well, and the program was good. I got a little hot, but other than that, it went well. Another thing that I wanted to mention is the RV park at the golf course. It is looking so good. I don't know when it's projected to be finished, Tracy, do you have a...
I don't have a firm date. As soon as we get exactly the firm date, we're waiting for them to concrete in around the pedestals, and then we'll start, like, then we'll order saw and do that. So as soon as we get kind of close, then they'll let me know.
It looks so good.
It does look good.
I have one concern, and I, you know, I've not heard anybody bring it up, and maybe Tracy knows, but it's a concern of mine. I don't know what we're gonna do to prevent people that'll be, that'll try to come up and camp. Are we gonna have a host that'll be at the gate, or...
Yeah, probably not this year if we get open this fall, but yeah.
Right.
We need to go, we'll have someone there to make sure, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's, we checked with a bunch of different things. I hate to say it's trial and error, but we're gonna have to, that first six months, kind of figure out what's gonna work best. We don't wanna hire a, you know, a full part-time person until we get busy enough to justify that. But, yeah, we've talked a lot about like length of stay, different things that will be addressed, but it, by spring, we should have all that dialed in.
Well, if anybody hasn't had a chance to ride up there and look at it, it's really good. And we appreciate Kenny Singh too, for the work that he's done up there. I think that's all I thought.
I'd like to interject here and take a minute or two to compliment all the activities that we have here in Payson, and to compliment the volunteerism of our citizens, and as well as the help from the employees. And Janine is in charge of our events. I've heard over and over from citizens here, but mostly from citizens outside of Payson City, complimenting us on how many activities we have for people to participate in. And I truly believe those kind of activities help us maintain that hometown feeling and small-town feeling as we grow. I think they're extremely important, so I'm very thankful for those activities.
At a degree. You know, when we ever had lulls in the salmon supper line, I'd talk to people and ask them where they were from, and almost all of them were from out of town. It was amazing. And a lot of them were from in-town that I knew, so I didn't ask, I guess. But a lot of them were from out of town, and it's maybe from Spanish Forks that this is the coolest event anywhere. Wish Spanish Forks had something like this. And I was like, well, you've got this and this, you know, really, or whatever. He's like, yeah, but the salmon supper beats it all. So that was kind of fun to hear. And, yeah, just another shout out to our volunteers and Janine. I mean, this time of year, I mean, Janine works hard all the time, but this time of the year between... She doesn't have the tour of Utah this year, but, yeah. But she's got a lot of things going on, and she does such a fantastic job. So I love that. Firefighters are looking a little tired. I don't know if we need to do something to help them out. They were dragging a lot this year, and I heard we didn't have as many firefighters volunteering. I don't know if that's true or not, is that, did we not have as many show up?
Yeah, we even had some from Elbridge come down.
Because we needed some help?
Yeah, we needed some.
So we might need to look at that, because that's hard work. It's hot, and they're standing by the fires, and they've got the extra layers on. Anyway, we appreciate them and all that they did. A big shout out to the residents for approving the park tax and our park committee. If you haven't been down to the pickleball courts and the basketball courts, they're absolutely gorgeous. They're often being used all the time. Great addition to the city. National Night Out was great. Chief Bishop, other than the whistles that were brought from Spanish Forks, it was a great evening. Kids were running around with all-off pitch whistles blowing them. And say it all the time, but that Tarasco Tacos, best tacos in town, or whatever they're called. Like, do they donate tacos again? Yeah, so he donates tacos to the community all the time, and his philosophy, I've talked to him before, is, you know, the community takes care of me, I wanna take care of the community. And I think it's important that we know, we've got great partners that are just willing to help out. And he gave out 2,200 tacos or something like that?
2,300.
2,300 tacos, yeah. Incredible. So, I think that's all I... Oh, one other thing on the website. So I was looking at the Economic Development Board, because there's some discussion going on there on our website, and I'm sure this will be covered when we update our website. There's nothing there. I don't know who the Economic Development Development Board is. I can click on the library board, which I know I'm on, and at least that would take me to the library website, but it doesn't say who's on the board. So there's some things that are just sitting there empty that if somebody's looking, they're frustrated. Like, either take them off or...
Update it.
Update it, yeah. Other than that, thank you.
Yes, Janine, it was a great night. I had a little guy come, and he said that we need to send our guys up there to teach the Alaskans how to cook the salmon, because they don't have a clue on how to cook the salmon. I thought that was really funny, and he said he goes up there all the time. Got it. It was great at the library the other night. My grandkids loved it. You had a really good turnout, and it was really nice. Like he said, we have lots of things going on, it's just people need to know about it. The last night was really fun too. My grandkids loved that too. So thank you, everybody, for helping. It really does, it does things for the citizens. I feel that they appreciate that there's things they can go to, and, you know, there are people who can afford to go out and do a lot of things, but they can take the kids to these things, that there's no cost to them. And I think that's wonderful. So keep up the good work, guys. Thank you.
Now, I'd like to tell you for my part too, it was a very good party, they have a, an end-of-summer party, basically. I was supposed to get all wet, but I apologize, I didn't get all wet.
I didn't, I didn't go.
Okay. For those that don't know, there was a, it was kind of like a dunking tank, but it wasn't a dunking tank. You just got water dumped on you, so, but I didn't come dressed for that.
I'd like to ask the councilor, Steve Southwick, all of you guys?
Yes.
Okay.
On the fundraiser for the murals?
Yeah.
Same thing, kind of dunked.
He wants us to get splashed on. Don't, uh...
Not dunked.
Not dunked, just splashed on. Okay, there's a difference. Yeah, okay, we'll go ahead and, I don't see if there's any scouts or any scouts. Oh, okay, let's do some scouts, recognition. Can we get your name? Would you come up to the table there and give Dave Tuckett your names, and we'll get some certificates for you?
Maybe you can give their names or introduce them, right?
Okay, yeah, we can do that, go ahead.
It's your favorite word.
Thank you, Mayor.
You bet.
Thanks, everybody.
Oh, that's what we do best sometimes.
It gets better every just a second.
Yeah, it does.
Here. Tell me your name. Allen Hill and Ethan Nelson. First thing I want you to do is shake the hand with our mayor and the council members. Okay? Okay, stand right here. Shake the hand. You didn't get it. There we go. Okay, one thing that we love to do is we like... To ask our scouts what they like best about scouting. Is your scout leader here?
Yes.
Okay. So, don't make him feel stupid. Say something good that you like about scouting.
I'll leave the students' project, so we do.
Great. The activities?
It's all good.
Okay, great. Well, we appreciate you guys, and we'll have you just hang out right here. The mayor has a certificate.
Should we get a picture with them?
Oh, you bet. Come on up, we'll take a picture. You'll really be embarrassed.
Well, if they're embarrassed, we'll be embarrassed, because we're gonna have to take them for a picture.
I'm always embarrassed. Thanks, you guys. And if you'll just, right here.
Go ahead and have a seat.
Oh, have a seat, we'll give it to you.
Okay, we'll go on to D, action items, resolution, UAM's jump program. Do we have UAM's representatives here?
Yes, we have Jackie Coons from UAM. This is our carbon-free project that we're working with up in Idaho. And the JUMP stands for Joint Use Module Plan Operations at the Carbon Free Project. And we'll welcome Jackie to come up and explain the program, and we have a resolution approving our participation in that.
Mayor and council, thank you for the opportunity to come tonight. I can refresh your memory on what our Carbon Free Power Project is. It's made up of three elements. The first is energy efficiency. We want to encourage all of the members to use as much energy efficiency program as they possibly can, so they're not having to build generation for that. And then the second piece is distributed generation, such as rooftop solar. We're really encouraging that, so that you don't have to also put in a generation to cover that. The third leg is our small modular reactor project. It is consisting of 12 60-megawatt modules, which use a new-scale technology. It will be installed at the Idaho National Laboratory out in Idaho. It is, the modules are in the cooled water under grade, so it is walkway safe. The New Regulatory Commission just ruled that it is walkway safe. Does not need any operator action, any outside electricity, or any additional water to cool the reactors. So the project is moving forward. We did hit our 150-megawatt threshold, so we have executed our power cells contract. What the JUMP module is, is we entered into a memorandum of understanding with the Department of Energy. What they're going to do is take the very first module out of the project. This is system enhanced in a lot of means. It is first-of-kind technology, so it really takes the dearest list out of that first-of-kind technology. They'll utilize it, they're going to pay all of the capital costs for it. What we'll do is, we're asking our members to step up their entitlement to handle that 60-megawatts for that first module. We will lay it off to the Department of Energy for 15 years by the new R and B on that module, and then we will do that in that, when we return to our members at OAM cost, with no capital and ongoing commission. So how we allocate it, this module is based on the current entitlement, and all of our members have moved forward, we're taking their portion of the JUMP module. And how we answer any questions and that.
Council members, you have any questions you'd like to ask? Brett, did you hear any of that as well?
I did hear all of it.
Okay.
So, how soon will we be receiving that?
So, the JUMP module or the project, the project itself is supposed to come on in 2026 for the first module, 2027 for all of them. And then it would be laid off for at least 15 years, so that would be 2041. So that provides a lot of growth, you know, coming back to Payson in 2041 at just OAM with no capital cost, is a huge benefit for all of them.
Okay, any further discussion by council, any questions?
Probably no projections on cost, that part, Ellen.
The cost of OAM?
Yeah.
It's supposed to be at less than half of the cost of the project. And it is taxed right now at $55 a megawatt hour, it's $2,018.
How much water does that take?
Great question. So what we're doing, we're just bringing on an owner's engineer, but we've been doing water studies. The water, if we wet-cool it, takes 21,000 acre feet. If we dry-cool it, it only takes 2,000 feet. So what we're, we believe that we can move to dry-cooling technology, and so that would be a significant less amount of water.
Where would you get the water at?
So it comes from the Snake River Aquabert in Idaho.
But would that be going through like all the ground?
Right, yeah, we have to be acquired in the first. And, you know, that's one of the other benefits. We have to acquire the water, and we have to transfer the usage, and so, you know, this is a great opportunity to use less water. Everybody's very conscious of that water anyway.
Any further, you got some more?
No, I just put a case to a name. It is.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
Okay, I have to make a proposably approved resolution supporting the UAM's JUMP program and authorizing improving the increase in our entitlement share to the Carbon Free Power Project power cells contract, the layoff of power cells agreement associated with the Joint Use Module Plan Operations.
Okay, we have a motion, it's been seconded, calls for a roll call vote, starting with councilwoman Hy.
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries.
Move on to... Technology, by the way, is really cool. If anybody gets a chance to look at it, it's pretty fascinating.
It's not on the agenda, but would like to have the Chamber of Commerce come on up and give us a report, the business of the month, I believe.
Sure. Could you set that black mic up as well?
Yes, sir. Sorry, facetious. Mayor, council, grateful to be here. Just a brief report on the chamber. We have some exciting things coming forward. We're, we're gonna try to readjust and make sure we're prepared to start January 1 with what we wanna do. We wanna try to implement a series of seminars to help businesses. And just to let you know, councilman, well, maybe a solution to the lack of volunteers for salmon supper is utilizing the chamber. But here's the situation. Santa Quinn has us helping for orchard days, and so maybe if there was a compromise on the date, we could get you some volunteers to cook you fish. This is my idea, but anyway...
Maybe they could come on Saturday, and, and, so we go down on Friday and help, um, no. They come and help us on Friday, and we go help them on Saturday. Like a good idea.
Yeah, yeah, there you go, there you go. Yeah, but anyway, that's something to discuss next year, so. Yeah, definitely. But is there any questions for the chamber right now? Yes?
I have a question.
Yes.
Are you going to replace the thing that's been blown over?
Is that the timeline on the doorboard?
Yeah, so we're looking for a good lawyer to sue the storm. But I can't find anyone. No, so, yeah, we're working with Dave Tuckett, and so, to be announced on that, but...
I've had a lot of people say that they miss the cute signs that were there in the past.
Right, right, yeah.
On the billboard?
On the billboard. As opposed to the one that was there this year.
Right, well, one of the challenges we have is when the, when the new interchange gets built, that sign will go away.
Right.
And so, I'd like to have a nice billboard sign, but I don't know if we can build it on that same spot. So we need to look to see if there's an alternate location. And I know it's a nice one right now, but I don't, I don't know if we wanna spend the money to, on that site, knowing that it's gonna go away when the new interchange is... Can we take it down? Yeah, we could take it down. But, I mean, so it's not like a house.
Oh, it's down.
Well, we...
We could clean it up. We told Andrea, sent an email out today, and I'll get with her, but, yeah, we, we need to really find another location and see if we can find a spot to build a nice sign. Well, that's kind of the way I talked to Ty a little bit about that, but that's kind of our, which direction we need to go.
And yes, good point. We are open to, we're trying something new, and trying to get people to shop local and thrive local. But are there any other questions?
I know the chamber, or I've been told the chamber's addressing this, but I'd love to see them, when we bring in thousands of people into town for some of these events, I'd love to see them capitalize it. I saw Eli's had a Scottish Festival shortbread ice cream, which is awesome, but not necessarily...
It's okay.
Yeah, yeah, but there's a lot of businesses on that street that could capitalize on these events a lot more, and it would be good for them.
I know I was giving out free insurance quotes for...
No, I can't remember. Did you wear a kilt while doing it?
Yeah, I should have.
You had to, you just need to put the kilt on, and you would have had all the quotes you needed.
No, actually, Mayor Wright brought that up to me, and definitely that's something we need to address with the businesses is capitalizing on, on these activities that the mayor addressed earlier, and utilizing those to our benefit.
I know, as I talked to Andrea, she was concerned that we not, that the chamber not infringe on what's going on too, and I think that's something we can definitely work out. There shouldn't be a problem with infringing on, on any...
Sure, work together, I'm like, yeah, that'd be great. Any other questions or concerns, or smart remarks, Theresa?
How did we do?
At the rodeo fundraiser? It was a great fundraiser. We doubled what we did last year, really scrimmily, so that will help the chamber, you know, we're constantly looking. Of course, our goal is to become self-sustaining, self-sufficient. We're looking at different opportunities for fundraisers, and, and so, yeah, we're always trying to get creative with it, but...
I think you say MTEC joined?
Yes, MTEC did join the chamber, and they are excited, and we are excited as well. I believe everything's gonna be different within five years, and we need to grow with the growth. So we're trying to strategize to do that. All right, well, let's get to the reason why I'm up here. It's to present the business of the month in our chamber for the month of... It's to present the business of the month in our chamber for the month of August. I must apologize, we fired our plaque guy because he didn't get us a plaque last night and didn't get us a plaque today, so I apologize for that, but we'll go ahead and have Danny and Corey come up here of Krabby's to go. They are our business of the month, and we'd like them to go ahead and say a few words.
That's more applause than I've had in ten years. I am Corey Krab, K-R-A-B-B. We do not have seafood, although we are starting a haddock fish sandwich because everybody wants one. I have lived in Santaquin since ninety-nine under Warham. I have driven the highways of Utah taking care of disabled people for the last twenty years, and I was fed up with it. And I love living in Santaquin, and I had a little vision of riding my bike, a mountain bike, down the road to my house there on the hill, and so I bought that piece of property that sat down the freeway, and I just wanted to do a coffee sandwich shop and ended up in a nightmare, full restaurant. I am honored that the chamber and our peers voted this as the business of the month. I know it gets, you know, leaves a difference when I vote for other people every month, but it means a lot to us. I'm trying to figure out a way to get, I believe that people in Santaquin come to Payson more for services than people in Payson or Santaquin, and that's pretty obvious why. So we're trying to get on the utility billiards so we can get our name on it.
I can tell you, I've visited your establishment more than once, probably ten times.
Oh, good.
So we do come from here.
Good, good. I mean, well, come twice as much. As many of you, you know, have been entrepreneurs and brand businesses, it is not an easy task, and you think that you're on the freeway there, you're just gonna have a bunch of business, and I should not have called it Krabby's because they don't know what it is. But I did bring my general manager Danielle because I, you know, my experience in life is taking care of people, not running a food restaurant, and she, hers has been doing food, and she's she's helped us have a couple visits from the inspector, the health department inspector, that have been very positive and a lot of good things said about us, and, you know, we're running a tight ship, and so, yeah, I wanted to thank her, I thanked her last night too. But, yeah, we appreciate being here, and hopefully we will be in businesses next year. We're at one year right now.
Just under.
Just under one year.
Just about four months.
And I honestly, after going through that winter, last winter, it was pretty bad. I'm surprised we're still there. We're good business people, so we're just gonna keep fighting. My mother-in-law is the daily trees, the seller, Jared Harrington. I had the opportunity to grab that, and it was on the right timing, but boy, that would have been a lot cheaper when I did it on the freeway. So anyway, thank you for coming to Hammer, the Krabby Ties, great.
Better than lunch.
Better than all lunch. Do you want to say anything?
Nope, just thanks you guys for us.
Too bad you couldn't shake your hands, Councilman Christensen, but we did.
Give us all free food too.
Yeah, free hamburgers.
You still there?
I'm still here.
Okay. Okay, we'll move on to number two, public hearing, boundary adjustments in Payson City and Salem Cities. Mark, you're up.
Quickly, I just have one slide. This is out, this is- This may have finally caught. Okay, right there is Arrowhead Road, and this is an existing road out there. It's twenty-two hundred West Street. And currently, the boundary is along that red line that is there. As the developer to the south is working with it, we recognize the need to bring the road into a right angle, and the boundary line brings it in at an improper angle for an intersection. And so with this boundary line adjustment, the blue portion, which is half the road, will go to Salem, and the green portion, which is that corner that is captured if you do the right angle there, will come into Payson City. That's the boundary line adjustment. It's that simple. It's basically so that we can have a good traffic flow and a good setup for the utilities that can come and out of there. This is a public hearing. Needs to be open for a public hearing, and then the result will be that Salem will also be having a meeting this evening on the exact same thing, and the two cities agree, have already agreed, but then we'll file the adjustment with the proper county and with Lieutenant Government's Office. The F B S approved.
Okay, with that, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. I'll entertain a motion for that.
I'll make a motion that we open for public hearing.
Second. Count on favor.
Aye.
Brett? Did you hear that? He might be asleep, and any of it passes. Okay, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Please step the mic, state your name and address and speak clearly. Try to limit your comments to three minutes. And again, it would be to agree or disagree with the previous comments. Don't repeat or state new information. So if anyone you'd like to come up and take advantage of the public hearing, please do so. Okay, not seeing anyone that wants to take that opportunity, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Second. Okay, motion has been seconded. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
There you go. Okay, motion carries. Counsel discussion, any discussion on the council? Oh, okay.
Glad that I have extrudia to do here, okay.
Okay, then I'll entertain a motion on this item.
Make this ordinance adjustment for the common boundary between Payson and Salem Cities. The ordinance number oh eight, oh seven, two oh one.
Resolution?
Oh.
It isn't yours, is it?
Because it's between the two cities, it's an ordinance.
So on the common boundary is divided by the twenty-two hundred West Street.
Okay, you'll have a motion, not a second to that motion, that motion. Okay, it's been, motion's been made, it's been seconded, calling for a roll call vote, starting with Councilman Christensen, you there?
Aye.
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 Motion carries, thank you. Okay, we'll go on to number three, resolution, development agreement with Springside Meadows. Jill?
Yes, and Mayor, typically, we would just say that the agreement's in your pocket, but I do have to discuss a couple of changes that, with the city council. So I had an opportunity to talk with Mike DiMarco with Salisbury Development earlier today to go over some additional changes that were suggested, and so I have a quick presentation to go over what those changes are, and then we're hoping for an approval of this development agreement so they can move forward with your additional changes and plots. So I've listed them here. We can go page by page if you need to, but I'm just gonna briefly go over some of the changes. The first one is section three C on page two. And as we have mentioned many times in the past, the basis behind the specific plan for this area of our community was based on neighborhoods. We wanted to have a variety of neighborhoods, housing products, design in this particular area. And we were proposing to have four neighborhoods out of these plots, and the applicant is requesting to combine some of them. So here, so for the benefit, I guess, of the public that is here, I can explain where Springside Meadows is located. So this is on the southern end of Payson. This is SR one ninety-eight going south to Spring Lake. This is the Highline Canal on the east. You have a lot of residential development that we've seen over the last couple decades in this location. This is Spring Lake Elementary School here. So if you're familiar with that area, Salisbury Development has been working on phases within this area for many years, and they're looking at getting approval for their final phases, as you can see here with the phasing plan. So what's highlighted in the colors here have recently been approved by the city council, and now we're finalizing the annexation agreement. So one of the challenges with this development is we're having to go back over several years and make sure that we get everything in this agreement, because as you were all aware, we've been working on this development for quite some time. So that's been the biggest challenge with preparing this development agreement and why it's taken us so long to get this to you on your agenda. Because we've been having to go back through a lot of paperwork and through the approvals and making sure that what we're proposing to you is consistent with the previous approvals. So the applicant is requesting, so you've got, one neighborhood is plot E and F. The townhome neighborhood is I and J, and we were suggesting one neighborhood of G and H, and then a separate one with L and N. The applicant is suggesting that we combine these. With further discussion with staff, we don't feel, we don't have any concerns with them incorporating those, so that would be the change that we would be suggesting on page two if you are supportive of that change.
Just a quick question. What is it that makes the neighborhood, is there like a bigger road in between them? Is there walls?
It's the type housing product. And in this case, it will be, there will be a distinct difference between the two because actually E and F, E has already been sold to D R Horton.
Right.
F is in the process of that transaction, and actually, these phases here will actually be developed by Salisbury Homes. So it'll be a very, it'll be easy to distinguish between those neighborhoods just because it's different builders. But they would like to see, to be able to provide their product throughout all four of these neighborhoods instead of having another builder or someone come into that, into that area. And then also on page, well, maybe it's on page three, there is a reference to the, this area here is going to be dedicated to Payson City as its park. We've also talked about having a new public, you know, fire station on this particular property. But there was a reference in the development agreement that says that the applicant is responsible for stubbing in utilities into that site, which we'd want to see for future utilities in the park area. They wanted it to be a little bit more clear that those, the number of connections would be consistent with the approved plans. They didn't want to see that somewhere down the line, as Payson City goes to improve this park, that we feel like, oh, we need another sewer connection, or we need, they didn't want it open-ended. And we were intending for it to be an open-ended option, but they didn't want it very clear in there that it is consistent with what's on the plans and specifications, which just shows one connection into that park area. And so we didn't have any concerns with that as well. The next one is on page four, section three J, and this is with electrical considerations. This is, this area has been annexed into Payson City since two thousand and three, but there has been some discussions with S E S D of who is the power agency within the municipal boundaries. And so we do have some very specific language in there that Payson City will provide the power for this new development. But we do obligate the applicant to take care of any fees that are associated with any transfer of facilities between S E S D and Payson. The applicant is requesting, and we can't provide this tonight, but we would like this to be part of your consideration in the moment, and the motion of staff will work through this. The applicant would like to know what that amount is before they sign this development agreement, rightfully so. So we might have to work with the S E S D to determine that amount, but Salisbury Homes would like to know what that amount is so they have a very clear understanding of what that means as they move forward. And again, that it's not an open-ended condition of approval, that they can come in, take care of that requirement, and that it will be satisfied. And so we don't have a concern with that either, other than we don't have an amount to share with you tonight, but we will get that information and share it with the applicant before this agreement is signed and recorded. The next one is-
Yes, how many customers are there out there that are using S E S D power?
Within the Salisbury Development, there were two existing homes. So you had an existing home that was here within plot F. It has since been disconnected and the home has been demolished. So it's been raised and to accommodate plot F. There is an existing home on this parcel that will be dedicated to Payson City that the applicant is in the process, part of the arrangement we have with him of accepting the dedication of the land is that they have to remove the existing home. So they are currently in the process of going through the steps in order to, they've actually had the asbestos test already done, they're getting asbestos in the home, so they will have to dispose of that appropriately, and they will have to disconnect the home from the S E S D power there. There are other homes that have been annexed, I mean, that have been annexed for fifteen years that are currently using S E S D because we don't have facilities there. So over time, those will be connected on to Payson Power, but with this particular development, it was just the two homes, and both of them will be demolished. They won't be there. Those are the two that they're talking about. Yes. Okay. Yes, that is, yes, great clarification.
Yeah.
They are not responsible for those few homes. They aren't responsible to go to other properties in the area and connect them. Good catch. The next one is on page eight. Here in the townhome area, they do have a number of amenities to support that townhome development. One of those happens to be a pavilion. Currently in the development agreement, we show that it must be at least four hundred square feet in size. Through conversation with Salisbury Homes and D R Horton, who will be developing these plots as well, they'll be building these townhome units. They would like to decrease that. As you look at the area where the, actually have it on the next slide. If you look at the area where the pavilions would be located, they want to keep as much green space available to be used for other purposes, and so they would like that pavilion size to be decreased to anywhere from two hundred and fifty to three hundred square feet. Staff was comfortable two hundred and fifty square feet because the applicant was willing to work with us on some other conditions of approval. But they are proposing to reduce the size of that pavilion in that location. And then, I want to say the last one is section three Q on page seven. And currently on, actually, we'll go back to that plan. Currently on this plan, so it shifts, so this is north, school is over here, this is where E and F are located. Highline Canal is up here, just to orient the group. So on the plans, the project engineer inadvertently indicated that there would be a masonry wall between the single-family dwelling neighborhood and the townhome neighborhood. Salisbury Homes as well, D R Horton are requesting that the city council change that to a white vinyl fence. There is a masonry wall that is proposed in this development, but it's along Main Street, and I think that's where the project engineer was, had some miscommunication. And so we still are having the masonry wall that's going to continue along the lots in plot E and F along Main Street, so it'd be a decorative masonry wall.
See, that's not proposed, that's-
That is required. That is required, and that's in the agreement, and the applicant understands that that's a requirement, is not proposing any change. It was just having a softer, you know, transition between the single family and the townhome by having a white vinyl fence. So they would request that the city council make that change in the development agreement. Actually, D R Horton, they would prefer no fence. They like more the open fence. They, they like more of the open field. However, we've, some of these homes have already been built in E, and we've had at least one fence permit already come in with them saying, I want to enclose my backyard so it isn't as visible to the townhome neighborhood. And so I think there's a need there to have some fencing, but it doesn't necessarily have to be masonry. As I mentioned, it was just an error on the plans, but because it was part of the plans, it was part of your approval when you first reviewed this, we felt it was necessary to bring it here to your attention and to determine what the most appropriate material is for that fence. We just want to make sure it's consistent. We don't want to see masonry, wood, vinyl, tan vinyl, gray vinyl, we just want something consistent. And so that's what they're looking at. That would be a development cause for D.R. Horton is to put in a white vinyl fence for the entire length of those single-family lots.
Basically, just an interior fence, not, not an exterior, like one on Main Street.
Yep. So those are the changes that are, that have been discussed since your packet went out on Friday. And so it's sort of been a work in progress, but having a conversation with the, with the developer today, he's comfortable with these changes. He was unable to attend tonight. He does apologize that he had something else come up at the last minute. But he is comfortable with these changes and would request that the city council approve the development agreement with the changes discussed tonight.
So I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
That pavilion is small. Is there some 250, 300 square feet? Go walk it. I mean, even the 400 square foot was small, so I don't know, what would you?
Staff's comfortable with the 250. You know, I know.
And isn't even going to be used because it's so small?
Well, and, and the example that Salisbury that provided me this afternoon was they have a 400 square foot one at their park, park side townhomes development in Spanish work, and it is rarely used.
Well, that's what I wondered, if maybe it'd be better to use kind of green space.
Because of size, just because people aren't using it.
I don't know.
Oh, you saw all, all green space?
Yeah, instead of, it's such a small, you know, really is small.
I mean, and that's an option as well. I know that we do want to make sure that we have amenities in there for the residents that will be living here. I mean, I don't know if we give them the option of that amenity or another amenity or.
Do they have a swing set there or?
They do, they do. They still have.
It's just a small, very large.
So they have a 30 by.
But that would be, that would be nice.
Oh, sorry, the next one. So as you can see here, they've got some open spaces between these townhomes here. These townhomes actually base into the open space, their rear boat. And so they do have a playground area that will be here, some benches and things that will be.
Yeah, just a thought, maybe a smaller one would be used better than a larger one, maybe, you know, especially if there's, there's swing sets and everything there that parents could sit there and watch their kids, and be in the shade, but that's just a thought.
It just seems so small. Like, I, I don't know what you put there, it just seems so small for a pavilion.
And they were worried about the space, the amount of space that's there. And then also the number of visitor parking stalls that are there. They don't want it to be too large, that there's not enough, you know, off-street parking. So, I mean, whether or not the council wants to, you know, consider modifying those amenities, we could also, we could, we could share those thoughts with them and a positive remake and amendment. But at this time, they're, they're comfortable with the 250.
So how big was it? So it's 250, what's the dimension?
It could be anything that's, that's at least 250.
How big's our pavilion in the park?
Oh, it's quite large. Yeah, because it, it holds at least 16 to 18 picnic tables underneath that, you know, that's. Well, another thing we need to take in consideration is the number of units in the development. I mean, the larger the development is, the more amenities or the larger facilities that we need to have.
How many pavilions are there in there?
So there's only, there's only this one that's in this development. But it's just for the townhomes.
And how many are in the townhomes?
So this area is common area that is just for the townhome development, so it's 89 units. So, I mean, even though it's a larger development overall, it's, it's common space. I mean, whether or not they'll, they'll allow neighbors in the, you know, in the area to use it, that's something that their HOA may determine is, is appropriate. But we have to look at it as, it's common space for the units in this location.
Any further discussion? Okay, if not, then I'll entertain a motion. I'll make the motion that we approve the Springside Meadows agreement with the condition that staff works out a specific amount for the buyout for the SESD utilities. And then all changes is currently ready. Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion that's been seconded. The roll call vote, starting with councilwoman.
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, number four preliminary plan and final flat for South Haven Farms subdivision located adjacent to and south of SR 198 to 100 South and between 1300 East and 1500 East.
Oh, it's coming up. This first one is an administrative approval. This is the east side of town with that Holdaway annexation, which recently approved. And so there's that annexation agreement, and what's been submitted, staff submits is consistent with the language of that annexation agreement. And tonight, again, just an administrative approval. And so the standard of review is whether it's consistent with city code and the existing agreement. So preliminary and final plan approval for South Haven Farms. Again, on the east side of town here, 43.61 acres in that annexation area right there in yellow, previously known as the Holdaway Pleasant Flats Annexation Area. The zone map has stated in the annexation agreement is the general commercial in that northeast quadrant in the professional office space, and in that southern half is residential multifamily with a maximum density of 20 units per acre in part of it, and 12 units per acre in another portion. And what's coming tonight is the proposed flat for what we're calling these like superpads or quadrants. So you can see here, this is the backbones of a, of a local grid system. So you see the, the four lots with the streets and utilities. And so the applicant has been working with staff, he's been working with the engineers to make sure that it meets all the requirements with utilities and streets and whatnot. And then in a subsequent development proposal, the various developers will come with the, you know, the inner quadrant development. So that will come at a later date. So that's all that this one is tonight. So the approval process is pretty simple. The action, again, is just an administrative decision, it'd be to approve with all the conditions of approval, so the red lines that staff has submitted back into the applicant. Most of those have been addressed, and we're confident that he'll be able to do that. So any questions about this one?
Council discussion?
So I, no, this'll be later.
Okay, then we address a motion for this preliminary plan and final flat bound for South Haven.
I, yeah, I moved that we accept this preliminary and final flat approval for this four lot subdivision, at South Haven Farms subdivision, SR 198 to 100 South and 1300 to 1500 East. And accept the, the RMF, the PO1, and the JC1 for the 43.61 acres, along with all of staff's red lines and everything that they need to take care of to make sure it's up to standards. Findings, sorry?
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Right. Thank you, motion carries. Hey, go ahead.
You need to present the next.
No, I'll, I'll go ahead, number five, yeah. Number five, request by Wauker Development LLC to rezone 5.35 acres located at 614 North 400 West from the S1 Special Highway Service Zone to the RMF Residential Multifamily Zone.
Okay. So, yeah, this next one's a legislative decision, again, this is a zone change, it operates a little bit differently. And as the mayor just read, we have the S1 zone as the current base zone with a proposed amendment to the map for this to be residential multifamily, with a density of 20 units per acre consistent with the depot that's immediately to the north of this project. So this went to planning commission and then came back to planning commission. So it went to planning commission in April, and then again last week, to give staff time to work through some of the kinks. At both public hearings, there was a lot of public comment, and I'll get to some of the things that were brought up and what staff's done to address the concerns that were brought up in the public comment. So here's the zone map again, you can see this is the north side of town, just west of I-15, south of the depot, which is the apartment complex that's mostly completed over there on corner west. Yeah. So subdivision map here, you can see the lot is on the southern side. The lot above it, lot three is a lot that's already developed, this is lot four, but lot four was not rezoned when lot three was zoned. You want me to go back?
No. Do you use your pointer?
Oh, yeah. So the depots are here?
Yeah.
And then this is the area right here that would have the zone change, to have the same product as the depot. So the neighborhood to the west, we have some rural development as well as the existing trailer park to the southwest. And then here is the depot under construction, and the area we're looking at is the area south of the depot, on next I-15, which you can barely make out right there. In terms of the area, you can see here in yellow is the, what U dots are released for the Nevo Beltway, and the realignment of the intersection on that north interchange. And in red, well, and here we have the Holdaway annexation that we just looked at to give you an idea of the scale. And then in here in red is where the depot is. And so you can see that this is an area that's close to the interchange, and I think in the next slide, yes, we see some of the nodal development that we're looking at with the general plan update. Of course, the new general plan has not been adopted, but as we've gone through, the discussion has been to concentrate growth as much as possible toward the intersections to reduce the amount of traffic that's created across town and have more nodal development. And staff believes that this is a step in the right direction to accomplish that goal by bringing some of the density closer to I-15 and closer to that interchange. Some of the concerns that were brought up during the public hearing. One of them were power poles during construction that were left in the street. That was an SESD issue. We've talked to our power department, and that was the feedback we got, and that would not happen with future construction. The other thing was the timing of all of the development. Neighbors were concerned the length of time that the road was cut open and the amount of traffic that was generated in terms of construction vehicles and dirtying up the road and all that kind of thing. And part of that is just the headache that comes with development, you know, the growing pains. But I did relay that over to our streets department, to our engineers, just in case there was something that we could do on the city side, is move that process over. Another thing that was brought up was the number of vehicles that park on the street day in, day out, and some of them, neighbors were saying, have, have sat there for weeks. Part of that is there was no RV parking in that initial phase, and so some of the RVs during the summer months end up camping along the street. So I have forwarded that over to our police department so that they're aware to, you know, to check out there with parking enforcement. And also, planning commission made a note to staff that with this future phase, if approved, that we would look at RV parking on-site, so we wouldn't have this temptation of leaving RVs on the street. Then, another concern that was brought up was traffic, traffic generated by these new developments. And the engineering department wanted to put up a traffic counter, but there wasn't a pole along that road that would accommodate our counter. The sizing of the poles wasn't quite right, so we weren't able to get exact traffic counts. But one of the engineers, Nestor, was able to, to, what was the word? Yeah, to model the, the projected generation from the developments that we have out there and then from the additional proposed development. And what he found was with levels of service, we prefer somewhere in this A to C range. As we get to E and F, that means we have a failing or failed road. And right now, the, the estimated trip generation and, and traffic on that road puts us in level of service A. That doesn't mean that there aren't more cars than there used to be. That, that road now has, you know, more vehicles, and it might feel like there's a lot of traffic out there, but that road can handle the amount of traffic that is there. The weekly average, we see the number of trips per day generated somewhere around 2,500. That road's actually a collector status road, even as a local road, is 3,000 in its capacity at level A. And at collector status, we increase to four or five.
Can you talk to me about the road that goes north and south?
The road that goes north and south, yeah. So we recognize there is more vehicles that use that road, the depot, but it's not so much that it even drops it from a level of service A to a level of service B. And so we recognize that it's a change for the residents out there, but it's not a change that our road cannot handle. Then the other thing that was brought up during the public hearings was connectivity. The current applicant does not own the land to the east and is not proposing to develop on the land to the east. But what was proposed is that it be stubbed, and so as development occurs to the east, there could be a connection, at least a pedestrian connection, but preferably a vehicular connection, whether it's through a parking lot or a road that goes through to allow vehicles to enter this way or exit this way, so not all vehicles have to go around this way. Plus, the concern was that if this road was blocked for one reason or another, these folks wouldn't really have a good way out. And so that, that was brought up by residents who were concerned about the traffic and about, about movement whenever there's an accident. And that was a recommendation of planning commission that we have a secondary access point. Again, at the time of development, there's not going to be a road up here, so we can't require that this, this road necessarily goes through, but we could require that there's a, a connection point that, that's stubbed, just in its design. So again, what's being requested tonight is that zone change from an S1 to RMF 20. Along with that change, it'd be tied to a product very, very similar, if not the same, as the depot in terms of density, look, style, layout, those kind of things. Exact layout, you know, fire code, you know, access, RV parking, parking stalls, all that kind of thing would come at site plan, so that comes at a later date. And right now, it's just zoning, so just RMF 20, and then tying that to the product itself, which is more or less the depot. So if a, a future applicant were to come in and apply for something that is very different in look and feel and size and architectural features in the depot, then that would require a new approval. So any questions about that?
Does it have, does the depot have another name? Teresa and I are confused.
Well, the apartments at the depots, it's full name.
Yeah. It's, as I understand, I asked that same question, it's the Wauker, it's a different owner of the, owns.
That's the LLC that owns the property.
Owns the property just to the east that we're talking about.
I'm in Philly.
What was it?
Ever Sage.
Ever Sage.
Ever Sage is like a parent company.
Yeah, Ever Sage.
You're, you're.
Yes.
What?
Yes.
What? I tried to do that. Keep your own.
Yeah, we did, we thought they'd changed the name to Eversage.
Ah.
But it is still, but the apartments--
We were confused, but we're okay now.
Okay, any further discussion? So, we're changing this from commercial, do we not feel like this is viable commercial development? Not commercial, but residential isn't?
As in, do we not feel like it's viable to keep as S1?
As S1.
To access it, you would need to cross an area of, let's see there, an area of multifamily. There's not really going to be great access on this side, so you have to--
On front of the road, just plant going right there.
Yeah, and I would imagine this would be more housing. We'd like to preserve the commercial corridor along, you know, the main collector road going east-west, but this will be a residential area, so I don't know that it really makes sense for highway commercial right there.
Okay, any further discussion, questions? If not, I'm ready for a motion.
I would say after all of our presentations today, we bumped the brakes on high density.
All three of them are.
I understand that, and I think they're all good developments, but--
And they're all where the high density should occur by the--
They are, they are, but I think we bumped the brakes a little bit.
So, we, I need a motion.
And with the motion, if you want to consider whether to have that connection be your requirement or not on the east side?
Yeah, just a connection point, point, okay. I make the motion that we approve the Walkera Development L.C. to rezonate from S1 Special Highway Service Zone to an RMF Residential Multi-Family Zone. The address is in the request, and that we ask them to put in a connection point on that east side that is discussed.
I'll find you.
And staff findings.
And what about the, did we have that question included in the motion? So, so you have two things, so RMF 20 that specifies the density, and also the ordinance that adopts the zone change will include some of the right-of-way next to it because it's along that I-15 right-of-way, and that needs to be in A-zone, even though obviously there's no development there. So, that will be included in the ordinance.
A-zone.
So, let me--
Commercial is Lot 4 of the depot, right there?
Yes.
RMF 20 too, it has--
RMF 20, and then it will include this area along I-15 as well, which is outside of Lot 4.
Owned by someone else.
A U-Dot.
Okay, yeah, okay. Okay, so is the motion sufficient or we need to modify the motion that's been made?
Okay, so we need to just say RMF 20, not just RMF, and include the I-15--
Corridor.
Corridor. Did you get all of that? Is that good? Because I don't know that I can restate it.
Okay, do we need, do we have a second? Okay, motion's been made, it's been seconded, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Good, motion carries. Okay, we're going to number six, request by Jerry Robinson to apply to TSO Transit Station Overlay Zone to 48.17 acres located at approximately 800 South and 700 West to allow master-planned walkable community around a higher education facility. Andrew, you're still up?
Yep, I'll give a little bit more background of this one. So, the area map, we're looking to the west of I-15, that's the interstate interchange right here, and so we're looking at this land, and maybe sandwiched, sandwiched isn't the right word, but we have the multifamily over here, multifamily here, and then it's right through here. See that with the zone map, where you can see it's currently zoned, all mixture of things, we have R1A, A5H, so both of those are agricultural-based zones, and then the S1 Highway Commercial and that whole area, and you can see the start at that 14.65 acres. Now, in order to determine whether or not the proposal's consistent with the general plan, we look at the area plan in this, in this part of town, that's the south of this area-specific plan. And on this plan, we have two different options, there's a base scenario land use plan as well as a higher education alternative. And you can see here that on the base plan, we see a density of 15 units per acre, and on the higher education alternative, we see that this property is on the land designated for a university facility. And that's because when this higher education alternative was created, we were exploring the idea of UBU coming to that south interchange, which we now know is planning on the north interchange, so there's been some shifting with what's going where, and the current plan is to have M-Tech come to the south interchange, and M-Tech doesn't require the same amount of acreage as we were anticipating with the UBU campus, or at least we put on this plan. And so, any university that comes, it's unlikely to be this large, and so staff was comfortable with allowing some of that land to be utilized for housing. You can see with the higher education alternative, we have a density of 20 units per acre south of this area, and so 25 units per acre seem to be appropriate for transition. Also, 25 units per acre was the maximum that was allowed in the TSO, that transit station overlay, and so 25 units per acre seemed like the natural go-to for application of that overlay. So, both with this higher education alternative and with the overlay, we look at what's around--
Hang on.
Do we lose councilman?
We lost him.
Yeah, we'll call back that one.
All right, that's helpful. So, with the higher education alternative, it requires a higher education facility, which we have with M-Tech, and then with the transit service, we have a transit-oriented style development, and we have, we have a chicken and an egg issue as it relates to transit. Obviously, we don't have a transit station down here on the south interchange, but obviously we won't have one unless we develop the kind of density required for one. Is he calling? Right, you there? No. So, a little bit of the backgrounds, as I just mentioned with the general plan, we're looking at nodal development, and as we look at the growth of Payson, we see that the growth of Payson, or the population of Payson doubles every 20 years or so, and that was true from, you know, 1970 to 1990, 1990 to 2010, and we're projected to continue that trend in 2010 to 2030, and 30 to 50. And as we continue that growth, one of the challenges is where to accommodate the housing for all these people, and so as Councilman Welton mentioned, we have a lot of these multifamily projects, and part of that's to accommodate the growth that we're having rather than sprawling all over West Mountain or, you know, the other surrounding areas. So, you can see in the general plan, looking at nodal development, and this project is on that south node, and so we believe it's consistent not only with the area-specific plan, but with the ideas that we're currently exploring with our own general plan update. So, again, you can see the general plan update, we have the prioritization plan, and this we have designated as a 3, which means we're looking at it in the near future, which is consistent with what's being proposed. And let's see, neighborhood analysis, we have the church that's going through that development process right now, then we have housing, freeway access, and job center all immediately nearby within, well, not within walking from freeway access, you don't want that, but retail and restaurants and groceries right, right across I-15, and then the possibility for transit. Staff has reached out to UTA, discussed the viability of a front-runner station at this location. We are not currently planning on a front-runner station, but UTA has mentioned that if there's no front-runner station, they're open to explore some sort of like BRT or shuttle or bus that's a little higher frequency to get people through the job center and to a node down here if we do build a node. And so, the, the idea is that whatever is built with the transit service overlay, or transit station overlay, would be designed to accommodate a transit hub, whether it's bus or train. And he's back, huh?
He's back.
Great. So, here's the proposed concept plan. Again, this is a concept plan, not a site plan, so a lot of the details haven't been worked out, and again, at a concept level, we don't look at a lot of those site-specific details. Some general things that stand out is we have a lot of trails, we have a lot of open space, we have different housing types here. We have three different housing types that would share the same HOH, the same community, which would allow people to grow their family and stay in that area or retire in that area. M-Tech would be right here, and so individuals who are taking classes at M-Tech could live here, work in the business park to the north and then take classes for M-Tech. Also, plazas, gazebos, and other amenities, things that are discussed in that TSO zone. A little bit of not-quite-mixed-use, like maybe we could call it horizontal mixed-use, with some retail or office space on that northeast side next to apartments. Now, these apartments on the north are a much higher density, three to four stories on the north, and then lower densities as we get further south, but overall, the average town density is 25 units per acre. You can see that right here. I think those are things I mentioned except, so with parking, there's parking onsite, but then also the proposal is to have a shared parking arrangement with M-Tech, and that would need to be signed and recorded on the property before we could go forward with future development proposals, before we could approve a future site plan, because of the viability, that would need to be explored.
Can I ask a question about the shared parking quick?
Uh-huh.
Like, so there's a lot of work that needs to be done on it, is that a perpetual agreement, or is that something that's re-upped every five years, 20 years?
It would need to be a perpetual agreement. We would need to have something secured in writing, both parties signed, shared access, shared parking.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, but those are concerned when I saw that is, is gotta make sure that parking stays there.
Right.
Or just to whatever needs, if people aren't driving as much, you don't need as much parking, but I'm not sure that it's in place.
Right, if front-runner were to come to the south, you know, side of town, we might have fewer parking demands here.
So, are reparking, are that problem again?
Yeah, and that's something we could address with site plan unless we have specifics now, but these being smaller units, I would propose we just don't allow RV parking in the entire thing, not, not like--
Well, then we don't want to park from the outside either.
Exactly, you, we could--
Didn't we do that before?
I think we could put signs up that say, "No RV parking."
So, we don't need--
Yeah, I think that's somewhat common. Or we haven't done that really in our city where we put up no RV parking signs, but that's something we could explore. And that was--
The covering of the loads going to the dump, you enforce it once or twice, and then it's not a problem anymore.
Right. That was one of the concerns brought up by the planning commission as well, was if this does fill up, whether it's RVs or, you know, other folks, that there's very limited on-street parking just by this design, and so, yeah, parking can become a premium, especially if there's not this parking secured up here. So, let's see, this is the potential concept plan for the whole area, just to show how it could fit in to the larger area, so you can see the M-Tech campus with a parking agreement, trail connections that would continue, take you up to the business park as a commuter-type trail, and connect into the city system and then continue along, so you can just kind of see size-wise how that all fits together. With housing products, there are not too many standards within the TSO ordinance. I think we, staff, would propose that the product at least meets the RMF, Residential Multifamily, housing guidelines, architectural guidelines. These ones are a little more urban in their, in their style, brought more in support of the streets, you know, how that kind of feel. These can be stacked units, condominiumized or apartments, and then common area that's surrounded by units that engage with the space, and so the common area is not just walled off, like, you know, flank walls. And then there's a variety of housing types, and you saw that on there. So, there's housing types of four flexes apartments, and then the four-story, three to four-story more urban units next to retail on that northeast side. And then with the amenities, there's a clubhouse, pool, and we'd have to look more specifically at the RMF, which would be our most applicable ordinance as it relates to this kind of multifamily housing to make sure it complies with those RMF standards if that's what we want to go with. So, the approval process, so I get some things worth mentioning now, again, the transit overlay, that's tied to the concept plan, so any material change to the concept plan requires new approvals. The site plan approval, preliminary and final plat approval, that's all at a later date, this is zoning only, so there's no vested right, except for the vested right to have a zone in place. The concept plan itself is only valid for, I believe, this period of 12 months, but that can be extended as long as someone's working towards something. We're pretty liberal with that, but it needs to be an ongoing process, so it can't sit here dormant for a while. Then, I'm trying to think of any other question, do you have any questions for me, probably? I have one, a second ago.
I can't remember what it is, so I'll go to my next one and see if the other one comes back to me. Is this tied into M-Tech coming, like what happens if M-Tech doesn't come?
Right.
That's a concern, like, I think it's a beautiful development, but if M-Tech doesn't come, I don't know that I'm comfortable with this.
Okay, good question.
If they come, then--
Yes, so again, this project, the overlay itself is tied to this concept plan, and this concept's plan, this concept plan is tied to a few things. One is that shared, you know, parking. The other thing is that university option, and so we would be approving this contingent upon it meeting the university option of the area-specific plan, so if there's no university, there's no shared parking, there's none of that kind of stuff, and there's no need for any type of student housing or whatnot, so it all kind of goes off the window at that point. So, yes, this would be tied to M-Tech coming and providing that parking, so both of those.
So, how does that work? Does M-Tech come first and then the development, or do they just have to be contractually signed and the development can start, like, when do they start? When does, like-- Right, because we can have it all in place and then something happens and they back out.
Yeah, at the very, at the last minute.
Right, like, how does that work? I just want to make sure that those connect.
Yeah, I don't know that we've discussed the details of that, because we wouldn't require like a COO to be in place for M-Tech before this can be built. So, as long as there's that shared parking agreement recorded and we know that M-Tech's moving forward and we have commitments from M-Tech and all the financing in place and, you know, all that kind of stuff, as long as the city's assured that M-Tech's moving forward, but I don't know if that's sufficient for the council or if we--
This one shouldn't be, yeah. Every conversation I've had with M-Tech officials is they are very positive about coming.
Right, my, my worry is we've had people who've been positive before and they fall out through, and so I'd like something a little bit more than I'm positive, and so if those things are in place, then I'm okay.
So, how long do they think this development will take?
Before they commence the site plan process, before the whole thing's--
After they get, after they get the site plan.
After they obtain, so after they do the site plan? I don't know, do you have a timeline at all?
Are you going to invite me up?
Do you have more questions for me than the developer is here?
Come on, come on up. Come on up.
Okay.
I had one other question that, what is the average length of a program at MTEC?
That's another question that's...
Depends on what you hear.
Well, because that's what I'm wondering, like, most of the programs are 30 days. Are they gonna be filling up these apartments?
Well, they have, for example, they have, I've been told they've got over 1,000 electrician apprenticeships. That takes quite a little while.
Right. Well, that's what I'm curious, like, because if the programs are all like short-term, you're done in six months, do they move for six months to fill the apartments?
They're one-year programs.
They're one-year programs. Some longer than that. Like, four-year programs, obviously you're gonna move, but MTEC's a little bit of a different animal.
They're shorter and they're not all full-time.
Right.
It's just a course that's time.
Which might keep people there longer anyway, because they're working and going to school part-time.
A couple of things that came up at planning commission though, real quick. Planning commission's motion, they mentioned a traffic study and a feasibility study as being a requirement before the site plan approvals. Also, one of the things in the staff report that was reiterated at planning commission, by the planning commission, was that the application of a zoning overlay is not a well-served commitment to provide any kind of utilities. And so all the, that kind of feasibility, all those studies would have to occur before that site plan, or I guess in conjunction with that site plan. And then here is Jerry Robinson.
Good, Jerry. Thank you for being here. Thank you. Let me just comment. In order for MTEC to sign an agreement conveying parking rights, they have to be entitled on the ground. And if they can't sign an agreement conveying parking rights, whatever you approve tonight dies. There's your safety valve. I have a resolution from the MTEC board you may have seen, and I can figure it out earlier, which may be of interest to you. Thank you. Let me just read for Mr. Christensen's benefit. This is a, the minutes from a meeting held in March by MTEC. Let's see, South Meadows Plan Site Proposal for MTEC, et cetera, et cetera. I've highlighted where it says, "Approval to Move Forward with Acquisition of the 13.3 Acres Off of 800 South Exit in Payson," in parentheses, "Payson-South Meadows Plan Development Site, Subject to Further Legal Review and Mutual Agreement by All Parties. Final Resolution: Motion carries unanimously in favor." We couldn't get much more support than that. Now we're working on the nuts and bolts. So, do you have my presentation up there? Oh, this is mine. How about your pointer? Can't talk without a pointer. One of the questions that came up from the earlier comments was, let's go back one, go back to, no, go back to the direction, go one more, go on, go further, other way. There we go. This is not 45 acres, this is 14 acres. You're not voting on 45 acres. Wanted to make that clear. It was, you know, the question was, how does this fit in the context of the neighborhood? So let me just comment about this. The, right there is an existing dry creek. It's not a natural location, it's just a ditch along the street. I'm proposing to make it integrated into the open space so that it feels more natural. And I've emphasized trails that go here, trails that go to the wetlands, trails that go north. In this particular layout, we've got three-story buildings here. We have two-story buildings right here. We have a four-story building up in this area. In the center is a clubhouse, open space, and we can go to the next one. I don't know where it is. The open space is the size of three football fields. I've made a point of this because it's hard to give context, how big is big? Well, a football field is big. And this is one long touchdown run from one end to the other. So as staff requires, if we need RV parking, we can sacrifice a little bit of the 3.2 acres of open space and pick up RV parking. We don't expect a lot of these people to have motorhomes. For the most part, if you're living in a studio apartment or a one-bedroom, maybe two bedrooms, you're not likely to have a motorhome. You'd probably live in your motorhome if you're in that situation.
Especially if they have a side-by-side or a four-wheeler.
Might have a four-wheeler, yeah, they could have that, so we're open to, we're open to that. So if you can go back one here. So these are the two-level units. They're all facing inward, but they're not blanked back. There is a project over here that's under construction. I suppose most of you have seen that. All due respect, it's rather flat. It is just a 150 feet of a flat plain wall. We think we're gonna look a lot more attractive if for no other reason, we've got a lot of variety, we've got open space. It's not a flat wall, it's not continuous. We have taken the trouble of aligning our roads. We've got 150 feet separation as requested by Travis, 150 feet from the tangent point of the curb return to the center line here, where more than 150 feet appear. So this is not just eye-wash, this actually can work. We expect it to change, but it can work the way it is. So let's go back to the overall, the first one. The question was, how would this, how would this relate to the larger context? Well, walkability, as I understand it, is a big deal. It's a big deal to me, and I think for this area, if you've got higher density, you want to have open space and you want to be able to get to it. There's our three acres down there, and we've also got open space all over here. These are wetlands. This was shown as university possibility, but there's no way on earth that you could build a university on, on wetlands. There's anywhere from nine to 12-foot vertical drops on these lands. So these trails connect the open space here, they connect the open space here. We purposely are connecting up here to a future train stop or bus rapid transit, or I think more likely, I'm predicting autonomous vehicles. I can imagine autonomous vehicles running every 20 minutes, day and night, to get kids back and forth. It's a great place to do it. And, but the point is, these trails connect, this trail connects down to a central point in the school. Kurt Michaelis said the school is, is growing 12% per year. They're expecting this campus to be anywhere from 250,000 to 300,000 square feet. So that means we're talking three-story buildings. I think that further adds to the urban look of the whole place. We've got commercial areas up here, these are along the street with parking in the back, commercial areas there. This is freeway off-ramp right there. So we don't see this being an isolated project, we see it connected. This, it's, as Daniel mentioned, this is a chicken-or-egg process. This won't ever happen without MTEC, and MTEC won't happen without this, because it's this, this project and this density that allows us to contribute the land to the school. By the way, is to, I want to correct something. In the last meeting, I misspoke about the value of this land. I'm an architect, I'm not an appraiser, so I take back any estimates of value of land. You can guess what 13.3 acres is worth yourself, but in this location, I would think it'd be worth a lot. Let's see, let's go, let me look at my notes here, see if I had missed something. Building types. This, this is retail along the front, residential in back. You can go back one layer. Right here, we're talking retail in front, residential in back. Yeah, let my phone go away. Retail in front, residential in back. Okay, go back to the images. So these are the ones that start to get higher density and taller as they move closer to the, to the future transit node, whether it's UTA or bus rapid transit. Next, please. These are apartments. These are more urban-looking, because that's the idea. If we're gonna accommodate the growth that is projected over the next many years of, as I read that chart, it looks like we're talking 50,000 in the next 40 years. More urban look seems more appropriate in the next one. By the way, I apologize for no landscaping here, I can do a whole lot better than this, but I was having a hard time finding pictures that really illustrate what I wanted. But we're talking two-story units. Some of them will be single-level, aimed at retired people or handicapped people. Go to the next one. But, hold on, let me just go back. Oh, just a moment here. By the way, this is the Ever Sage apartment. Their sign out in front, by the way, says Ever Sage, for what that's worth.
The confusion continues.
The sign is big and it's very clear, it said, I've got the picture.
It says Ever Sage.
It says Ever Sage. Maybe it means something else in their language, I don't know. Go to the next one if you would. We've interviewed the people there. There are 168 units as of a few weeks ago, 130 were occupied. They expect 100% occupancy in a couple of months. Their highest demand is one and three bedrooms. They don't need more twos. A lot of younger millennials, I guess, don't need two bedrooms either. So he's, the manager said, there's a strong demand in Payson, so go to the next one, let's see what that is. I think this may be the end of what I wanted to say. Okay, just go back, go back to the name. So, so our goal is to fit with the South Meadows specific plan, which was implemented by the city several years ago. Even though it's varied from that, we don't have a university, you know, UBU is not coming, but we think this is a great alternative, and 300,000 square feet of classroom space is no small, no small school. And they're predicting, they're planning on 900 cars, by the way, which means their calculations are that they have 60% of their classes are at night, and 100, you know, if you count 100% day classes, 60% occupancy at night. They figured there's 40% of their parking stalls that are empty and not used at night, and it's nights and weekends when they're empty, and that's nights and weekends when the residences come home from their job in Provo or Lehigh or wherever they are and need a place to park. So that's where the calculations came from. That's from Kurt Michaelis at the city. So we feel like it fits with the node that, the node concept that Daniel was talked about confines the density to this area rather than spreading it across the west mountains all across the rest of the valley. And people with single-family homes can keep their single-family homes and not feel crowded in by apartments over their back fence. So our hope is that with an approval tonight, you would make it subject to engineering and architectural plans. It is zoning, it's not, you're not approving a project per se. An amendment to the area-specific plan, complete assessment of utilities, traffic, everything else that's required. We've already completed the geotech study, we're paying for the survey, MTEC, conditioned upon MTEC parking agreement, of course, meeting all city standards and ITE standards, which I think means international traffic engineers, is that right, Travis?
Yes.
ITE standards. So, MTEC's committed to coming, and with your zoning approval tonight, it'll allow us to generate the cash to complete the transfer, because it creates the density here that pays, because this is, if this is 25 units per acre, the other school is zero units per acre, so somehow there has to be a way to make it happen. So your approval will allow us to bring MTEC to Payson. So thank you for your consideration. Thank you, Jerry. Appreciate your presentation. Any further council discussion? If not, then I'm ready for a motion.
Okay. Did you remember?
I can hear you asking questions.
Okay. I move that we approve the application of the TSO transit station overlay for the density up to 25 units per acre along with commercial space as shown on the concept plan, contingent upon the satisfaction of conditions, including the recommendations of the planning commission and in the staff report. Some of these conditions include, "The overlay shall be tied to transit, which must be incorporated into the site plan or development plan. The granting of the overlay does not provide any well-served commitment by the city. Any impacts such as roads and utilities are the responsibility of the developer and will be addressed at the time of site plan. The overlay is tied to this concept plan and any material change, such as a change in density, housing type, open space, connectivity, trails, or parking would require new approval. Assigned share access and parking agreement between MTEC and the overlay area shall be recorded prior to approval of any future site plan. A traffic and feasibility study will need to be completed and the recommendations implemented before site plan approval can be granted. The architecture and design will need to be approved by city council in conjunction with the site plan and at a minimum will need to be consistent with the RMF zone. Also, overlay shall be valid for one year and can be extended with the submission of a site plan, as long as you continue to move ahead and not just stop. Also, all findings from finding and zoning, that's all the red lines that you guys are still working on. Do you think anything else goes?
I think that pretty much covers it. That's the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 You got that, Brad?
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to number seven.
Can I ask one question? I'm gonna need an answer. How long do you think this will take if you get the approval?
Now, there's a question.
You're hoping to start, start next year?
Well, start, starting next year, I mean, springtime, we'll start building. You know, we're talking about a very large project, and so build-out's going to depend on demand, but it'll be, it'll be a period over a few years. It won't be overnight, all of it.
I'm sad to see some of my playground areas growing up disappear, but I think you've done a really good job. Like, the development is very nice, very well put together, and I know it's gonna change a little bit, but I appreciate your work. I appreciate you reaching out to us.
You're welcome.
Answering questions.
May I respond to that? I'm sorry about losing your playgrounds too, but we're making it do better.
It's actually better, so like the trails and the water's going through there, like, that's, that's more accessible to...
Right, that's more usable. Those ditches along the roads are not romantic at all.
So I don't know. I ran through the ice when it was frozen.
I'm expecting something that would actually look, I think we could make it look more natural than it does now, and make it next to playground areas, so it will create new and better playgrounds. So you go back and, you come back and...
So Jerry, will everybody be able to use that open space, like the people from the city?
Well, it's not public property, although the easement for the trail through there is public property, so I guess I... Are you asking if it's dedicated to... It's not dedicated as a city park, so it's probably, legally probably not, but as a practical matter, I have a feeling you'll see a lot of soccer games there, because as I said, it's big enough for three football fields. And why... And why wouldn't we have soccer games and other facilities there? We have parking.
A long-term discussion, but that looks like a great place to have a farmer's market for all the local people on weekends.
Yeah. You've got shared parking. Absolutely.
Okay.
So, it'd be a better playground than it was.
Thank you, Jerry. Appreciate it very much.
Okay, thank you.
Move on to number seven. Ordinance on Many Title Four Business License and Regulation Regarding Beer Sales. Dave?
Hey, before you move on, Mayor?
Yes.
I'm gonna go ahead and sign out at this point in time. I gotta move out.
Okay, hey, thank you for your effort and being here.
I appreciate your part. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.
This next item is an amendment to our business license ordinance. The state of Utah passed a law that took effect in May that does now allow alcohol sales, beer sales, to be sold out of drive-through windows. They passed this several years ago, not allowing it, but they, they've now allowed it. The city can still determine if they, they don't need to allow it. The state law does allow it. The city, each city can decide. We've had some of the businesses request that it be changed so they can sell alcohol out of the, or beer out of the drive-through windows. So we made a change here that would take out the provision that we do not allow it off the business license ordinance. That's for your consideration. In talking with Brad, and he's talked to some of the Genies, is one of them, about, and we didn't put it in here, but we wanted to have a discussion, that if they do sell beer out of the drive-through windows, they have to have a electronic ID reader so that we make sure that they have checked for, that the person's of age to sell that. Brad, do you have any update on that or... We're trying, we were trying to find the cost and the ability to get that. I know some of the businesses already have those electronic readers and at least with Brad talking to Genies, he was okay having that requirement. We didn't put that in here at this time, so...
I did speak to West River Oil. They're the owners of Fast Gas here in town and in, I guess, multiple cities. But they have them in all their locations. They got there from a company called Cisco, which is their petroleum distributor. I did reach out to them and they're trying to get back to me on who they get them from or if it's from X. He thinks Exxon is the one that developed that, so I'm still working on that, but there is other readers out there that can buy besides that. That was just one that I knew of because, you know, I go with Fast Gas, but...
Does he own any others besides Fast Gas in Payson?
Jim?
Jim.
They have certain...
One in Smashport and one in Salem.
No, I meant here in Payson.
Yeah, he owns two. He owns the one on the highway and the one I hunted south, the Harveys location. He recently acquired that one about six months ago. So he owns that one and the one up here. So, I spoke to the owner of Genies. He, he wanted my support. I told him I typically have not supported it just for the pure fact that it has always seemed to cause problems throughout the years of underage alcohol sales. But, the law has changed. There's other cities have changed and there's a lot of pressure, I think, on cities to help the businesses out, whether or not it's a good thing or not. I'll leave that up to you guys to decide. I don't think so, but with the, with the electronic readers, I feel like that's an additional safeguard that would make me feel more comfortable in your, your opinion or your, your desire to move more of it, so... Well, I'll work on that. I don't know if I'm gonna get anywhere with them, but I'll certainly try and work with them still, but I would personally like that in the, in the ordinance that beat it up a little bit.
So at this point, you could adopt the ordinance as written, just taking that provision that we do not allow it out of drive-through windows. We could table it till we put that in there or if you wanted to adopt the resolution with the, with the added provision that an electronic ID reader would need to be utilized at the location where they sell beer out of the drive-through windows. Those are kind of three options you can do.
And as a side note, the fire department brought in, it's the same title, but we'll bring, bringing back, changing that also regarding fireworks, upgrading the fire ordinance to match fireworks. So, you'll be seeing this titled probably on the next agenda anyway.
Trista's also here. She administers the business licensing. If you have any questions for her or any things that might come up, she gets usually the questions and then deals with them, but...
So, how is, oh yeah?
We comment or no?
Up to the discretion of the mayor.
If you'd like to give us a comment, come on up and go down by yourself. I know we are, Kim, but come on up and hand it up by yourself.
I just came here for fun, but I should have an opinion on this stuff.
Come on up, come on up.
It's being recorded. We need to follow the facts.
You came here for fun. Has it been fun, Kim?
It's been a blast. So, yeah, like I said, I didn't really come here. Oh, Kim Eves, and just a resident on Payson. I just came here to listen, but I, I would be really opposed to that. I don't see why someone can't get out of their car and walk in and then you know whether or not they should be getting alcohol. So, that's my opinion.
Thank you, Kim.
I was wondering, like, just because you have a reader, how do you know that they actually use it? I mean...
Well, I think that's the chance we take. It's just like, it's just like sticking an ID through the window while not they, they look at it. I just, I just thought that just for pure fact, if you're gonna have some appetite to pass it, at least we would have that additional safeguard. Like I said earlier, I don't feel like it's a great idea, but with that added protection, it helps.
Well, it helps even when they come in.
Yeah, it does.
They do the same thing. I mean, so even if they're walking in...
I think historically, you know, years and years ago, it was a whole different, a different case. I know the alcohol prevention after the county has, has dropped ourselves a lot over the last 20 years. Does it still happen? I'm sure it happens, one way or another. Should we do everything we can to prevent it? I think so.
Because they're all vaping right now.
What's that?
Because they're all vaping right now.
Yeah. That's a whole other discussion for a whole other ballgame, but I just felt like that if, if that was the appetite of the council to pass this and allow it, then that's another, another avenue we could use to maybe help safeguard that. But if you don't feel like you want to pass it, that's up to you.
Well, it's not even that too. If they go to Florida, another...
It's kind of a moot point because we got communities all around us that probably are going to pass this, so it really doesn't do us that much good not to pass it. I agree totally with Kim, but you got, you got the bigger picture to, to deal with too, so...
Right. And I think the retailer's argument is that, I mean, we're, we're gonna lose our business to other entities outside of the city limits, which is gonna happen.
So he's gonna drive 10 minutes of waiting so we don't have to get out of their car?
Of course, they have to.
That's the argument you're reading?
I do.
Gonna drive 10 minutes of waiting, you're gonna have to get out of your car?
I do. I'm trying to get the gas.
Yeah, I don't know.
Is it, is it gas stations that...
Right.
Just gas station right now.
Not just gas stations, but like, little convenience stores, this...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and they're the gas station. What is that place?
Whether that's the case, if it's gonna happen, I don't know. I'm not in the business, so I'm not sure.
Should we get in trouble if you don't pass it?
No, no, no. We can, we, we can't grow, go stronger than the, we can't supersede the law, but we can, you know, we can go stronger with our, with our ordinances.
My understanding, it's up to each city, if they want to allow it or not. We just have had requests from the city to, to allow it.
I did, I did reach, reach out to the state, the DADC on this, division alcohol, and the lady I spoke to was not in favor. She didn't, didn't feel like that it was a good thing. Obviously, it wasn't up to her, it was a legislature that passed it. So...
It could come up again next year, maybe that reverse or something.
It could, it could. I, I think you're right on several points. I mean, the neighbors are probably gonna do it. I know cities have done it. I know other, others, store or businesses in other cities are trying to approach their local governments also. My only thing was, if we're going to allow it, if, if this governor body's gonna allow it to happen, I would soon have that extra safeguard of the electronic reader. Whether or not they use it's gonna be up to them, but they do jeopardize getting caught doing that because we do regular checks. If we could, if we feel, if we want to, we want to make it stronger, we could also, you know, up the fine or, or we could do a number of things just to, you know, step...
What is the fine?
What is the fine? I'm not sure. We have to look at the, the schedule. Do you know?
Mark, isn't the fine set by the state code that we have to impose?
I think it's $250, $500, and $1,000 per second or third.
Per violation.
That's pretty good.
It's pretty heavy.
After that, if they go past the three strikes, if you will, then we can go take the beer off the shelves for the weekend or the week. So if they do take it seriously...
It's a moving scale. It's gradual. The more violations you have, the more chances you are...
Most of the time, if they have an employee that sells, they will fire that employee that sells seriously if they do.
We're supposed to go through training before we let them sell, but I know when I first started prosecuting, it was only $50, and then just two years ago, it was pretty heavy, $200. And it hits them in the pocket if the employee's gonna get caught. And they could get fired by the player.
How many gas stations do we have to add drive-up? I mean, convenience stores that have drive-up windows? We brought that one up, at Genies.
Most of them do accept the word Fast Gas.
Fast Gas, doesn't it?
No, but they're going to put one in.
Are they?
Yeah. They're going to expand later next year into the field they bought behind them, so they're, they're going to drop them.
Just a fact of life that people don't want to get out of their cars.
That's, that is true. And, and I can see what Kim's saying, is people not wanting to get out because they don't want to stumble in there too. But the state law also, also prohibits you from being on to any, any rated individuals.
That's where my concern is. They have to come in, you can tell. If they don't have to come in, it's much harder to tell that.
That's, that's always a concern. So, there's pros and cons, I think, on both sides. Mostly cons for probably the general public, but pros for, for the retailer. So, like I said, I just thought of the ID scanner just to, if we were gonna have an appetite to pass this, to leave that out. If you feel strongly against it, then, then I support that too.
Okay, we got any further discussion? If not, I believe I'm ready for a motion.
Why don't we turn it off?
I'm waiting.
Don't let the debate continue.
I did ask the question.
Because these two are voting no.
Yeah. We, we go through the motion. We gotta go through the motion.
I move that we accept the ordinance change for Title Four Business License Regulation to allow alcohol to be sold through the windows at the convenience stores and the gas stations.
Okay, have a motion. Is there a second?
Second. Okay.
It's kind of weird to say something weirdly, but no, honor.
Okay, my motion has been seconded via roll call vote, starting with Councilwoman Hyatt.
Aye.
Me.
Nay.
Motion fails because of, only plus. That's right. Motion fails.
We know it's revisited if they have a deposit of money, then it hurts us and them, but...
Okay, we'll move on to number eight. Resolution Agreement Between Varial Impact and Payson City.
Mayor, Council, this next proposed contract is with Varial Impact, that's Mr. Jean Pro's company. Y'all know Lynn, and I can have him come up as well. We're working on getting some economic development assistance. I know Lynn's helped us, maybe with UBU and other businesses without cost, but we've approached him to help us with certain things. Want us to get a new car dealership and also a used car dealership and help us with the rodeo facility with UBU and, and some of the donors. Sorry if it's in here.
Oh, it's me.
What we put in the pack, we've had some additional discussions, but we, basically, it's a six-month contract, $4,000 a month to work on these specific items. There are also some bonus payment if those, if those economic development programs are established in Payson. We have talked a little bit about the amount of the bonus. We, we give more of the bonus toward a new car dealership. I, I think Lynn's provided some information to Brian and some of the committee that used cars probably will bring more tax dollars into the city than a new car because of how many more used cars are sold. And so there was a question about switching the, the compensation for, for used cars to the bigger number and the smaller one to the new car. And I know Brian's not here. He's, he still wants to push for a new car dealership in Payson. When I talk to Lynn, I can have Lynn address that, I thought maybe as a compromise, we, we increase the, the used car from 20 up to 30 and, and then lower the, the new car bonus from 50 down to 40, kind of levels it out a little, you get more for the used and not quite as much for a new, but it still gives incentive to, to try to get that new dealership as well. So, that would be a proposed change based on, or from what you got in the packet. And anyway, I'll let Lynn speak for a minute, and if there's any questions you have for him or I, this is what we're proposing to help with our economic development in the
Council, good to address you, and, and it's, it's an awkward request from my perspective. I've been working for about almost two years with the city of Payson as a volunteer in your Economic Development Committee as, yes, Wintra, Jean Pro, but I go by Lynn. Should I spell that? Okay. Okay. Great. So when I was the Director of Economic Development and the Business Resource Center at UBU, I was, as part of my, under that umbrella of responsibility, I'm on a variety, or was on a variety of, of community economic development committees. And then most recently in October, I was asked by the Governor's Office to head up a defunct agency called Impact Utah that had lost its federal and state funding and as part of accepting that responsibility, the state has funded that, that agency. And so I'm full-time attention to the manufacturing section, sector of this, of the state and under an economic development mandate in training and then also for all businesses in rural Utah. And so rural Utah under that agreement with the state with GOED is all the counties outside of Utah and Salt Lake. But I have a passion for the city. I'm not yet a resident, with an emphasis on yet, and the, the opportunity to continue working on a couple of projects that, that I've been central, centrally involved in was of desire. One of those is, when we talk about a car dealership, this is really a collage of initiatives. The car dealership is really the payback, hopefully, to whoever we can induce into participating in two other programs. One is the bringing of, UBU, as you know, has expressed and purchased interest, purchased land in support of this interest in developing a remote campus. Having recently been an employee in the extension portion of that, of that institution, which, which is the division that runs all of our remote campuses. I know that there is a, I, I know that it's a prioritized initiative for, for the, for the institution. In addition, they have a rodeo program that is consistent with the rebranding of Payson that I was involved with, that has very forlorn horses sitting in an open field under a bridge next to their soccer field. And being able to bring the rodeo program as a first initial initiative, you know, bringing something over that is, again, under that umbrella of extension, was, was something we've approached UBU for and they, in talking to the, the leaders of that division, are willing to let us assume. As part of that, we would build an equestrian center. And the equestrian center would be part of the rodeo and support the rodeo program, but also be a, a community rodeo facility indoor, but also an equestrian center. So you have an entire ecosystem around it for equestrian therapy and equestrian sports. And again, that's... and again, that's in support of the rebranding around the adventure element of Payson's DNA. And the thought process around that is that there are several dealers, car dealer networks that are resident here. You've got the Garf Group, the Miller Group, and the Young Group are the primary candidates for supporting that equestrian rodeo initiative. The Garfs are steeped in a family history of cattle, of ranching. If you head over to someplace like Oakley, you'll run into part of the Garf ranching empire. They still are involved in ranching. Mrs. Miller is very, very committed to equestrian and approached the university about creating an equestrian center with UBU, which UBU, I think, not wisely turned down. There's still that expressed interest. So the thought process around that initiative is to go to, at least those two is our primary targets for interest, in supporting the UBU campus with the first rodeo coming, the rodeo program coming immediately, and then an equestrian center being sponsored by one of those groups. The car dealership is how they make money, and so by putting that deal together, where they have an economic engine supporting a kind of a community contribution in the south end of the valley, both of which don't have a strong presence here, is that initiative. The used car portion, the used and new car portion of that is how do they get to cash fast? In the private sector, I've run a couple of businesses, sold a few businesses, I actually retired in 2010, and I ended up at UBU because my wife kicked me out of the house and found me a job there. But I know that the fastest path to cash is what I care about, you know, the time value of money. And the reason that we put a used car option on the table is that they can go to a used car mall immediately by purchasing the land, paving it, and immediately selling cars, where if you go to a new car dealership, you have to get what's called a point of sale, they call it a point, and that's a two-to-three-year application process with any of the brands, Ford, Toyota, Honda, whatever. So for Garf to get an additional point added to their fifty-two dealerships, or for Miller to have a point added, is a two-to-three-year process. And so we were looking for a way of transitioning for them to support this community initiative, this university partnership, and get them with a cash incentive that might eventually evolve into a new car dealership. But I see those as disparate focuses, let's get cash in their pocket now, get cars sold now, in support of this broader initiative. So that's one of them. The other is the downtown revitalization, and I think that we've talked at length about that. And again, that's the collage of an ecosystem that Payson would be the focus of, so. And the reason that you're being charged is that I have to do that to justify that to the state, so that I can accommodate my time and attention paid to this, as opposed to what I'm contracted for, and I have the opportunity under contract to be able to do this.
Thank you, Lynn, I appreciate it. Before I open it up for discussion, I would like it to be known that, you know, I very much support this initiative we're talking about, and I believe the council knows where I am on that. So we'll go ahead and open that to council discussion.
So I'm just wondering, how many hours will you be able to put towards this per month?
It'll be a minimum of a day a week. I mean, our contracted rate for private, and we do contract rate is ten thousand dollars a month, and so we will be putting a minimum of that, but I'll be attending all the economic development meetings, so that's a minimum that I'll be putting into this.
But I would rather you be on the phone talking to all these people than coming to meetings.
Those meetings are extra, I will be dedicating that time to pulling those parties together. Although you and I enjoy our time together, that's not going to accomplish the initiative. It'll be a place for me to report that, but not as part of the time commitment.
So that would be above and beyond what your commitment is?
Correct.
So it's at least one day a week?
Correct.
So four days a month?
Correct.
That's four thousand dollars.
Yes.
How many hours is that, twenty-four?
Correct.
You're going to work twenty-four hours?
No, that is a four of my commitment for these initiatives.
So it's eight hours a day?
Yes.
Times four, thirty-two hours. What does that figure out to an hour?
More than you make, probably.
Well, we can talk about that here.
I'm a school teacher, I don't relate. On this food, okay, I figured, I have this list of food industry, and I don't understand what it is, but that's because the categories are at the bottom and not at the top.
So the food thing is what? Brian's wanted to put down there?
Oh, these are, these are top fifty restaurants, it looks like.
So are you going to be going after, like what, he's wanted to do?
Yeah, so what the intention for the mainstream revitalization, again, is pulling together ecosystems, and ecosystems include the four culinary schools that exist in the area, we talked about Park City, UBU, M-Tech, and SLIC. I've met with three of those culinary heads, and what we would do is essentially a shark tank of their graduates into a food truck option, we were talking about calling that the Payson Posse, in support of community, as well as valley, you know, initiatives. And then those that find traction that the public supports, and that's the best way to find out what works, is how people actually pay for it, would then graduate into what we're now calling the food mall. And we've looked at several of the downtown buildings across from the library and next to the library, that would be primary targets for as many as six culinary opportunities. You've got, well, I don't know that we want to, we can talk about the businesses, but I don't know that they're interested in, yet the public knowing they're interested to sell. But we, there are several established older businesses down there in five thousand square foot of larger buildings that are willing to potentially sell the building. So we, I'm already talking to investors that would come in, and this is really following a model that I was introduced to when I was traveling looking at incubators, because I ran the business incubator down at BYU, in Dallas, in Chicago, in Portland, Oregon, and in Austin, Texas. And what they've done is, is that, like, for example, the founders of Fuddruckers bought a huge warehouse, a storage warehouse, they converted it into eight restaurant-sized bays, and they bring in restaurant ideas from the greater Dallas-Fort Worth area, and they sponsor the build-out. So the chef is not, doesn't have to put a dime into his or her idea. They build out the restaurant, they have a common commissary, and then they let the public choose what works, and whatever works, these founders take it out as a franchise. So they're, from an investor's standpoint, it's their way of validating a food idea in a minimal investment. For us, it's a way of bringing in the talent that's already here in the south end of the valley and just over the hill, and allowing the public to experience new culinary experiences. One of the things that we learned from the survey and the branding process is that we'd like to eat more than Mexican and pizza, and this is the opportunity to be able to, I hope there's not somebody that's a pizza parlor.
No, I was just like, thank you for that.
The intention is to provide, you know, culinary variety, but it also gives, if you think about, but I wish I had brought a slideshow, I didn't know I was doing a presentation, or I would have brought some pictures of some of the places that I've, like Sixth Street in Austin, go look up pictures of Sixth Street in Austin, Twenty-Fourth Street in Portland, Oregon, is where foodies go to, as this hub of activity. One of the proposals is that, you know, you repurpose something like the library, move it over to the Petite Neige Center, but as I really dug into what this could be for the city, that might be a, keep the library where it is, just expand its purpose. And so you build an ecosystem of traffic, foot traffic around Main Street, and I think that you'll have a really interesting, beautiful downtown, there's two blocks bounded on the back end, on the south end with the soon-to-be refurbished as Qush. And then I think that it would encourage the formation of additional potential culinary opportunities that, you know, we aren't necessarily involved in. But what I, what you see, Council, there is an estimate of potential revenue in the first year from either a used car, a new car, as well as a food court, only with two restaurants in it, as opposed to the four to five that the space would accommodate. The upside of a food mall, they're calling it mall now, as opposed to court for these upper-scale eateries, is that you do have a common commissary, so a bell pepper can be used in fine dining, as well as Chinese, as well as Mexican, as well as Italian. Bell peppers, a bell pepper, diced is diced, but then you have the chefs going into the common, you know, food storage and even kitchen, and cooking their, their unique, you know, whatever their unique menu happens to be. So it's all part of a way of looking at downtown to draw traffic, to give Payson its own unique identity, and to my mind, being a resident currently of Provo and seeing what, you know, John did to the downtown in that area, I think that the council was very, very progressive in their inducement to try to get businesses back on Main Street, on Center Street, I should say. I view this as the same thing, but I think it's more deliberate even than Provo was about. And if you've been down there, you see that there's an energy, an interesting energy. You've got two schools coming down here, I think you have the population to bring that energy right down to the focus of city, of your Main Street.
So on the food incubators, how long do they occupy before you move on to the next one?
Yeah, so it's anywhere, I mean, you can have some that fail quickly, the more tough, for those that know anything about the restaurant.
Right, so someone who has mortality consists, right. So how long if they're succeeding, do we keep them there before we let them out?
Right, so they're, we wouldn't necessarily be the ones making that decision. The investment council of individuals that have put the money into this would be doing that, and there's that.
So we're supporting it as a city, but we're getting private investors to actually?
It's a public-private partnership, is how you.
And the public, the public part comes in how again? What are we, what are we providing again?
So what, potentially, you could lease the building, I mean, this could be, you might buy or lease the building, you don't have to, we can get investors.
I'm just trying to figure out what the public side of this is, like, what we need to do.
At some point, you might consider, for example, building a cover in that alley right next to the trike place, as a place for concerts to be, you know, for the bands to assemble, or for food to be, you know, to be eaten on the shoulder seasons. So the city council at one point might go through a remodel of the facades of the building, or give an inducement or some kind of incentive to the building owners to do the same thing, but do so under a common design theme that the city designed, you know, that the city council approves. And I'm not prepared to present that.
Yeah, Provo gave incentives for them to read their facades of the buildings, correct?
Right, exactly. So that kind of, but you do it under a design within a design parameter, so it looks, you don't lose the feel of an old-town Main Street.
Right. So this is probably not legal, and they probably want to do it, but they're just thinking outside the box, so if you have a concept that came to Payson and then was successful, can we claim like a percentage ownership as a city? I know, it's kind of weird, but like, we help them get off their feet.
Absolutely, and the intention is.
To be a residual income coming back, long-term.
Absolutely, and I don't think it's illegal. I think you pass a resolution saying that the city can participate as part of a stabilization or supplement to its tax base, create a ways of spending tax dollars. It's very similar to the investment fund that the state has for small businesses. The state takes an equity position in businesses that it makes grants to, that it gives grants to, that it makes loans to, so.
Because that's interesting, that would be interesting, that, like, we create, like, a revenue stream that's not just property tax and other things like that, then we're helping businesses get off the ground, and we can own some equity, you know, without, you know, providing an opportunity.
Yeah, so what's really interesting is, what drew me to this, is I saw some elements of, the components of this are sitting there, and it's like super saturated sugar water, right? Back when we were kids, we'd put the string in the super saturated sugar water, and crystal was of, you know, sugar with form. And you have that opportunity here, you're looking for a way to preserve the essence of an old-town Main Street. Retail is dying because online is killing it. You have the potential of walkability, well, what attracts walkability? Another element that could go with this would be, for example, participatory arts. You could encourage, for example, a pottery-throwing, you know, group to go down there, a glass-blowing group to go down there, you know, flower arrangements group, I mean, there's all kinds of interesting ways to make it a compelling place to go spend a Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday kind of thing, if you guys.
I'll go to the glass for anyone.
Unless the Mennonites around here don't want it on Sunday, but at any rate, I'm from Oregon, things stay open on Sunday there. But there is all kinds of fun things, but the first thing, the first catalyst, is that you have these culinary arts programs, and there is, we do not have anywhere locally where those graduates, even literally national and world award-winning graduates of these programs, have a place to go. So we solve that with the food trucks. The varied entry is very, very low, meaning that the cost due, that's very low. We then have the public validate the idea by paying for it. Those that graduate from that go then downtown, those that graduate from that go out as a franchise, or else as a standalone.
So you started a food truck, going downtown and then making?
Yeah, but some concepts don't lend themselves for food trucks. Fine dining, for example, does not, and so having the food mall where you've got a truly fine dining opportunity would be, it would go directly there, but you would have both community, investor, and then the heads of the culinary part as the committee making those decisions. So there's some collective wisdom in informing what we do and don't want to put the money into.
What's the timeline on something like that?
We're already holding the meetings. We've already met, as I said, with the three, with the three, so I met with, the only group that didn't come was UBU, and then they got castigated by Camp Martin for not coming, so they're coming to the next meeting. But we've already met with M-Tech, with Salt Lake Community College, and with Park City culinary heads, and they're thrilled, because they say we don't have an option like this.
Well, we wanted to upgrade our downtown.
Well, and food has been.
Bill, can I, am I able to talk? I know, I'm not even supposed to be here, but I have.
You're talking to your citizens.
Ask some questions.
I, no, I just want to tell you, I'm like emotional about this, like, I've been here seventeen years, and my biggest frustration with Payson is the absolute lack of any sort of diverse dining. And so I'm so loyal, I remember when Teresa, I remember when Teresa ran, she was like, shop Payson, shop Payson, I was like, go for that, but I don't want to eat Mexican and pizza every night, you know? And so I just absolutely love this, and I feel like we just, we don't have a culture here. We don't have something, like, I love the equestrian and the rodeo, because that was our, like, old culture, we wiped that all out, the racetracks, they're gone, you know? And so I feel like we lost our culture. You know, I've been here seventeen years, I'm like the most pro-Payson person ever. We had a business on Main Street, it couldn't survive, you know, because there wasn't a whole plan around it. Does that make sense? And I feel sorry for businesses that come in there, go, come in there, go, come in there, go. And so I'm like massively supportive about this. I think that if the town knew that this was even an option, they would rally behind this like crazy.
Appreciate your comments. No, no, I appreciate your comments, Kim, go ahead, go.
So the exciting thing about this, Kim, is that, is that when I did the, as part of the branding exercise, we looked at the history of the city, and you have a remarkable history. I mean, as, all the way back to the Petite Neige story, right? But the first to have pressurized irrigation, the first to be electrified outside, you know, out of Salt Lake, you were the second, first in this valley to have a high school that became the BYU Academy, which became UBU, the first to have electric cars, so you had the rail system. And then there was this adolescence of the community, and it seems that it kind of lost its way, but going back to the roots of innovation is really what we're trying to do.
I love that.
And being proud of this history and the roots of the community, this is, it's really about adventure, I mean, you truly are, that's your DNA as a community, all the way back to its founding, and this is a culinary adventure. That's why this fits with the branding piece, is that it's a place that you go to experience new. Well, the fact that nobody is taking advantage of this, that we have the feeders of talent already there, and there's no place naturally for them to go, the fact that there are already economic models that we're simply honoring by, you know, flattering by imitating, so these are concepts that are working in other communities.
Yeah, I mean, I travel all over the world, and this is the kind of thing that grows, so it doesn't just grow Main Street. By having that, then other businesses want to come. It's like, it's like, you have. It's like, it's like a, you have to have some kind of attraction. That's, that's how Lehigh American Fork, they started to get an area that, you know, you have to get something that attracts other businesses in. And I don't like going to Spanish Fork and in Provo to eat. I want to eat here.
Because right now, we're, you, there's a cancer there. You feel the death of the businesses.
You do.
And this, I think, is the opposite of that. It's the cure to that cancer of what is becoming retail light.
Yeah, I love that.
Okay, I, I think, I think anybody that sits here and can listen to Wynne talk feels the excitement in his voice, and I do cer, I certainly believe that although you equate eight hours, I think you put a lot more than just eight hours into this routinely.
But what I want to do is, I seriously would rather have you put your time into this and not coming, not having to come to Payson all the time. I would rather you like come like once a month and present to us, so all of us know, like maybe 15, 20 minutes before a meeting. I, I just feel like, if you don't have that much time, I want you to spend it doing the job. Don't be coming to meetings here, because, I mean, you can talk about it, but the fact is, is I would rather have you doing your own meetings with these different people and not, I'm not saying it's wasting time, but if somebody needs to talk to you, they can call you up and ask you a question. I just would rather you spend your time having meetings with those people and not really having meetings with us.
I don't share Kim's love of the meat at these meetings. So I'll come to record if these are, I'll still come on to the, to the monthly meetings that you have.
We'll check on that, we'll see if that...
I would just, I would just like to see if you, you know, like, if you could just come for like 15 minutes once a month. And because I'm on it, Bill's on it, but the rest of them are not on it, so they don't know what's going on, and I would like them to be kept up to date on what's going on.
And some of these will have really predictable timetables and others, like, you know, Pam, when are you building the building? I don't know. But what we do know is we could probably get an equestrian center built from a private individual with their name on it, next to the location, and have that done as well ahead of a print. You know, Young shows up with, you know, with the contractors starting.
Okay.
Start that.
I think I have time for motion.
Oh, and there was one thing on here that we needed to change on number 16. So it wasn't an automatic renewal?
It isn't.
Yeah.
I know, but on 16, it's, it still shows that it is on number 16.
We'll put that in the motion.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the agreement between Rio, Impact, and Payson City with the...
With the number 16 taken out, with the automatic...
With the automatic renewal taken out.
And probably this, this will commence not until I first, but today.
Okay. Oh, I have one question before I go on this. So when you're talking to the dealerships, are we given incentives?
Uh, yeah, we're, right now, I'm, we're going to be talking about giving, I'm in communication with the state, because your incentives are... Just because of the amount you...
Well, we just really, we just don't have that, we don't have anything...
No, the leverage is in the 4. whatever percent of the 7.25 percent. And right now, I'm working with Russ Arthuringham, who...
I know Russ.
You know Russ, who's guiding me through the, the landlines of state bureaucracy to get the, an incentive tax credit for whoever we induce down here.
So, because I, I don't want us to have to like incentive, especially because we have three used car dealerships here, and I would feel bad that, because we may put one or two of them out of business and we didn't give them any incentive to come here. And I realize why you're trying to give them incentive, because we're trying to get other things to happen.
Yeah, the incentive for them is, is to invest in, in the land and in the equestrian center. And, and the kind of money to buy the land and to build the equestrian center's got to come from the tax, from the state. And so I'm not, I'm not including here 1% or half a percent, I should say, in the incentive. I think that we can give the state to acquiesce to a performance kind of deal, and that's usually around revenue generated and jobs created. And we can, the calculus for that's really straightforward.
That's what I just wanted to...
Okay, we got the motion, we have a second?
Second. Okay, this will call for a roll call, starting with Councilwoman Carter.
Aye.
Aye.
Caris, thank you, Wynne. Thank you, council.
We got one more we gotta do.
Oh.
Yeah.
I just got to ask this, where are we getting the money from?
We're gonna have to come back with you at the budget amendment, cover that.
Okay, number nine, Resolution Junior High School Resource Officer Agreement with Nebo School District.
This is a, a contract between Payson and Nebo School District. They're planning on putting a school resource officer in the junior high. Until they go to the middle school model, which will be next year, they'll have the, the school resource officer at the Payson Junior High, but that person will also go back and forth between Mount Nebo and Payson Junior for this year. And so they are paying half the cost of, of the officer. Brad's been interviewing officers that we're, we're hiring for Mountain View Hospital, as well as the school resource officer, and a couple are retired. And so we've got some officers to replace and to hire, so. But this does take place when school starts. School district's ready to go, and I think we can get it covered this year. Anyway, this is the interlocal agreement for, for the junior high school resource officer.
Any discussion?
I just have a, I know that at the charter schools, well, I know the one in San Quentin, they have to buzz them in, so it's locked. They don't even let them in. You have to, they have to know you, they have to have a picture of you to see them be buzzed in. Why don't we do something like that, like, so that people just can't come and go as they want to?
That's have to be an able school district thing.
Right, and the schools, the new high schools are being built with that in mind, and they're being retrofitted. But you're, you're on a model that's, when everybody came up to school with gun racks in the back of their trucks, we didn't shoot each other.
Yeah.
So, but they are, they're working on that. And that will be part of the new buildings that they're building.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I vote that we accept this resolution for the police officer to go to the two different schools. Which one, the Nebo School District, the Nebo School District, that we will partner with the Nebo School District.
Okay, that sufficient? Okay, you have a second?
A second.
Okay, well, no, it's a roll call, starting with Councilwoman Hyde.
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. Do you want to go into, say, I guess I can go adjourn to a close session? Do we want to do that tonight, or what do we, what do we want to do?
It's up to you guys.
What do you want to do?
You don't have a full quorum here.
Don't even know what it is. Yeah, we don't have a full quorum here. It would be, well, we'd have to go into a close session to say that, but...
Would you want a close session?
Yeah, that's, okay, yeah. A motion, I'll take a motion to go into a close session.
We go to a close session.
Second. Okay. Roll call vote, starting with Councilwoman Carter.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.